All right, we'll start in 30 seconds, 30 seconds. All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We're going to call to order the November 3rd, 2025 meeting of the Merced City Council. We're going to begin with an invocation from Pastor Joel Dorman of the Summit Church of Merced. Then after that, we're going to have veterans from both our Army, Navy, and Air Force, Aggie Freeman, Maria Lopez, and Darrell Turf are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Dorman, would you stand?
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you have made. We thank you for the state we live in, the country we live in, the city we live in. We thank you that you have surrounded us with more than just geographical beauty, but you have surrounded us with the beauty of the people around us, the souls made in your image. We do thank you for the nation we live in, that we have the freedoms we can enjoy, the freedom to move about, the freedom to come and go as we please, the freedom to assemble, and yes, the freedom to even protest and even tell our leaders what we like and don't like. We thank you for that. Forgive us when we take that for granted. We pray especially for those on the front lines of defense for us as a nation, for us as a city, may you watch over them and care for them and their families. We pray your guidance for our city council, our mayor, the staff, as they seek to govern the affairs of our great city, that we can continue to pursue being the city of mercy. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I thank you for the opportunity to be here with fellow citizens. In the name of my Savior, Jesus, I pray, amen.
Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Dorman. Thank you to our veterans. Thank you for your service. Shannon.
Hey, Agenda Item D, roll call. Councilmember DuPont.
Present.
Harris.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Jean.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Boyle.
Here.
And Mayor Serrato.
Present.
Mayor, I'd like to remind the audience that if they wish to address the city council, they must submit a green request to speak form located at the podium in the back of the chamber. Additionally, citizens can submit public comment to the city council electronically no later than 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Comments received before the deadline will be sent to the city council and will be part of the record and will be mentioned as part of the written petitions and communications portion of the agenda, and they will also be posted on the city's website. Material may be emailed to cityclerk@cityofmerced.gov, and any correspondence received after 1:00 PM will be distributed to the city council and retained for the official record. Also, for those audience members who wish to hear the council meeting translated into Spanish or Mong, please let our interpreters know.
Hello. Buenas tardes, buenas noches. I mean, hi, good evening, everyone. Me llamo Mirna Zaretz, soy intérprete en español. Si ocupa mi ayuda, voy a estar aquí. Muchas gracias.
Ya, Jean, quto ta konohoro fe mi toa, quto tse lu mongro ne mano, yene te sata lotro gushita, mano tse lu mongro ke nju gurope no, quo tse lu mongro ne o chando.
In accordance with Government Code 54952.3, it is hereby announced that the city council sits either simultaneously or serially as a Public Financing and Economic Development Authority, Parking Authority, and/or successor agency to the redevelopment agency. City council members receive a monthly stipend of $500 by charter for sitting as the city council, and the mayor receives an additional $100 each month as part of the adopted budget and resolution 2024-78. The Public Financing and Economic Development Authority, Parking Authority, and successor to the redevelopment agency receive no compensation. Agenda Item E, report out of closed session.
There is no report out of closed session.
Agenda Item F, ceremonial matters. F1, proclamation, school psychologist week.
Thank you, Jennifer. If we could have our school psychologists come on down, everybody, please give them a warm welcome.
Didn't know there were that many of you. He always comes strong. All right, I want to welcome you all once again to our city council chambers. I want to thank you all for the incredible work you do, working hard on the front lines of student achievement, student mental health and wellness, and I'll give, you're the spokesperson, I believe? Give you the chance to say a few words.
Thank you. You know, I always like to take this moment to thank you, Mayor. It means a lot to us. You're actually one of the first to actually recognize us, and so we really appreciate you and everything that the city council does for the schools and the school system and the students, so thank you for that. So this year's theme is finding your path. Recognizing the ways that school psychologists take an active role in helping everyone in their communities determine paths to learning, growth, and overall well-being that meet their unique needs. Through their deep expertise and training in consultation and collaboration, and evidence-based practices, school psychologists lead their communities by empowering others to set their destination and find routes that fit their unique needs, all while sharing tools to help them thrive along the way. This year was a unique year for us. We lost two, sorry, if anyone wants to take over the can, I'm pregnant and a little emotional. We lost two amazing school psychologists who served in our community, in our county for over two decades, and we want to take this time to recognize and acknowledge all the things that they did for our community, for our students, for our schools. And so this year, we would like to dedicate the proclamation to Ron Hoffert and Luke Demott in recognition of their lasting contributions to our field and the community. Ron and Luke's legacy continue to inspire so many of us, and we are honored to celebrate them both through this special acknowledgement. We have Donna Hoffert here. We also want to acknowledge and recognize her, because if there's one thing we could do different is I wish we could acknowledge them while they were alive. Donna and Ron were one, and she continues his legacy, and so we want to thank you, Donna, for being here. Ron Hoffert, you are deeply missed, but your legacy continues to guide and inspire all of those.
I'm probably the worst person I'm going to cry to. Ron Hoffert, you are deeply missed, but your legacy continues to guide and inspire all those whose past you helped shape. Your life was a reflection of what it means to dedicate oneself to the growth of others. From Calusa County to Los Banos, from Merced City Schools to the Merced Union High School District, you gave your heart to every student, teacher, and family you supported. As an adjunct professor, you shared your knowledge and nurtured future school psychologists with the same patience, wisdom, and kindness that defined your work. Even after decades of service as a school psychologist, you never stopped learning or seeking new ways to make a difference. In 2023, you earned your administrative credential and stepped into a new role as vice principal at Mitchell Senior in Atwater, continuing your lifelong journey of helping others find their path. Your legacy lives on, not just in the schools you serve, but in the lives you touched, the confidence you inspired and the compassion you modeled. You made people feel sane, supported, and capable, and that is how you will always be remembered. Donna Hoffert, school psychologist at Merced Union High School District, continues to serve the Merced community with the same spirit of compassion and dedication. Your steady presence and genuine care embody the heart of school psychology. Thank you, Donna, for continuing the work that uplifts and guides others. You are an enduring part of the legacy you and Ron built together.
I can continue or? And we also want to recognize Luke Demott, school psychologist from Witten. He devoted his career in supporting and advocating for students with disabilities for 22 years in the Witten School District. He is admired for his kindness, commitment to families and staff. He will be missed by the special education team that he worked with closely. He'll be missed by all of us, and we will fondly remember, he'll be remembered for the care and support that he gave to others. So thank you for allowing us to have this moment. I know it was different, but we really needed this as a community, so thank you.
Thank you all very much for being here. Thank you for the really impactful words, and thank you for the incredible work that you do as well. Needless to say how important it is, and you know, every day being on the front lines of really big battles is, it's crucial for the, you know, for the future of our society, so thank you. Here's the proclamation. Whereas children and youth learn best when they are healthy, supported, and receive an education that enables them to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. And whereas schools can more effectively ensure that all students are able to learn when they meet the needs of the whole child and provide integrated, multi-tiered supports. And whereas children's mental health is directly linked to their learning and development, and the learning environment provides an optimal context to promote good mental health through connectedness with the school and community. And whereas sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, school safety, social and emotional development, prevention, early intervention, and support of culturally diverse student populations. And whereas school psychology has more than 60 years of well-established, widely recognized, and highly effective practice and standards that are clearly articulated in the National Association of School Psychologists' model for comprehensive and integrated school psychological services. And whereas school psychologists are specially trained to foster and deliver in the school and community a continuum of mental health services and academic supports that lower barriers to teaching and learning. And whereas school psychologists help children thrive by nurturing their individual strengths across both personal and academic endeavors. And whereas school psychologists are trained to assess student and school-based barriers to learning and individual strengths, make database decisions, implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies, and evaluate outcomes and improve accountability. And whereas Merced, California should recognize the vital role that school psychologists play in the personal and academic development of our city's children. Now therefore, I, Matthew Serrato, Mayor of the City of Merced, on behalf of the Merced City Council, do hereby proclaim November as School Psychology Month in Merced, California, and commend observance to all our citizens. Thank you. Thank you.
Agenda Item G, Written Petitions and Communications. Mayor, the Clerk's Office received emails from Latonya Richard and Sebastian Cervantes regarding Agenda Items K1 and K2. The emails were received by the 1:00 p.m. deadline. They were sent to Council and posted on the city's website. Any emails received after the 1:00 p.m. deadline will be sent to Council. Agenda Item H, Public Comments. Members of the public who wish to speak on any matter not listed on the agenda may speak during this portion of the meeting and will be allotted three minutes. The mayor may propose a further limit to the time available for all speakers at the discretion of the City Council in order to accommodate as many speakers as possible. State law prohibits the City Council from acting at this meeting on any matter raised during the public comment period. Members of the public who wish to speak on a matter that is listed on the agenda will be called upon to speak during the discussion of that item. Mayor, I currently have, I think, six request-to-speak forms?
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Our time's for public comment for non-agendized items. Jennifer, call the first speakers and mayor U.C. fit.
Okay, if I can get the first three speakers to the podium to my left. Marcus Ariano, Chief Stanfield, and Darrell Scherf.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, Marcus, you're first.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Marcus Ariano with Treehouse Tutoring, and we're an educational organization in town that assists students of all ages with a variety of different academic subjects. This time of year is especially busy for us, because as I'm sure many of you know, it's college application season. And that time is very stressful for many students. Some students know where they need to go but don't know how to get there. Others are so overwhelmed they don't know how to start, and others yet have a good handle on what they need to do but just need a helping hand to get across the finish line, and that's where we come in. So we've met with students, identified their pain points, and I'm very happy to say this will be our third year offering our college application navigation workshops. These are designed to offer small group support to students and families who have any questions at all about the college application process. And in addition to the resources that are offered by the schools, we offer holistic essay support, which no other organization currently offers. So any students who have any questions at all about UCP IQs or any other application essays, we are more than happy to help with the entire process. The first two years were very successful. We've helped dozens of students in Merced get into colleges all throughout California, ranging from CSU Long Beach to UC Berkeley, and some students going back east to the Ivy Leagues. And this year, we want to scale up that support. So we partnered with MUHSD and CI for CI, and we'll be offering two onsite workshops to be able to increase student accessibility. The first is going to be November 15th at Atwater High School from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and the second is on November 22nd from Merced High School from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Any students who participate in these workshops will be entered into a raffle to win application stipends to help with the cost of ever-rising application fees, and also college gear for the schools of their choice. We would love your support in this initiative. We understand that college is not the path for every student, so we will also be having student or staff from the J.C. come out to answer any questions about trade and alternative pathways as well, in case the four-year might not be the play for them at this time. We would love your help getting this word out. This is completely free for all students, and we want to help as many students as is possible. If it's possible, I'll leave some flyers here for the council. And if you have any questions at all, you can reach out to me, and I can also offer you the digital versions if you could push those through your own communication channels. Thank you so much for your time, and remember that every student can do it.
Thank you, Marcus. Thank you, and thanks, Merced High Interact, too, for all the work at the Riley Park cleanup on Saturday, too. Great work.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Please, Chief Steve Stanfield, this morning, or this evening, I just want to come and thank the community for another successful Cops and Critters trunk-or-treat, which we had last weekend. We had well over 1,000 children in attendance. We did our annual open house. It was very well attended, but we're moving past Halloween, and we're on to Christmas. And so I'm here today to let you know that we're beginning our toy collection with our partnerships with the Merced Fire Department. We are going to be looking for new and unwrapped toys for children ages newborn to 11. The deadline for donations will be December 5. After the deadline, you can drop off toys at the police station, and we'll accept those donations. We just want to actually acknowledge and thank Tractor Supply of Merced. This weekend, they reached out to us and wanted to donate $250 to the police department for us to use in equipment and for how we can serve our community, and we feel like the best use of that $250 is to donate to the Children's Toy Drive, so we will be donating the $250 from Tractor Supply to buying toys for our community this year. This flyer is available on our Facebook page, and we encourage everybody to go as we begin our toy drive. There's a lot of youth that are needing assistance this year, and we really want to serve our Merced community, and police and fire are willing to shoulder the burden of collecting the toys, distributing the toys, and we are looking for the community's help in gathering toys for children this Christmas so we can give all the kids in our community a wonderful time. So this flyer will be available on our Facebook page, and we thank you, and we welcome everybody to the new holiday season.
That's cool. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Scherf.
Good evening. My name is Darrell Scherf. I'm a past president of the Merced Sunrise Rotary Club. Every year, we do our Field of Honor. This is our 13th Annual Field of Honor. We're co-sponsoring it once again with the Merced Community College. They have been so gracious, so generous in giving us, they used to call that field at the corner of Yosemite and M Street. They called it the Four Corner Field. Now it's called the Field of Honor Field. So we're very honored that they're allowing us to use their field once again. We have the same presenting sponsor, Joseph, Joseph, excuse me, Joseph Farms and the Peter J. Gallo Memorial Foundation. They've sponsored since the beginning. They've been our presenting sponsor the entire time. We have a lot of community sponsors out there, a lot of community support. We have people that come out and volunteer. Anybody's interested, there is a, right at the bottom there, mercedfieldofhonor.org, and on that page, you can either purchase a flag to recognize or honor a loved one, a family member, hopefully your family member's a loved one, but maybe not, or a friend. And basically, what you do is you pay $35 for the flag. You get to take that flag home at the end of the event. Each year, you bring it back. It costs, it's a $10 re-fly fee. So currently, I just checked, that was on my phone earlier, we have just over 550 flags that have already been sold. We haven't even started the event. The event begins this Friday, where we'll set up roughly, we'll probably set up about 1,500 spots. We'll have about 1,200 flags that are set up. Saturday is when it first opens to the public. When I say that, you can actually come out anytime. Once the flags are up, you can come out. The lights are on starting Friday night. You can, it's open 24 hours a day through the entire event. On Saturday, we have the public come back. They bring, bring back all their flags that they're going to re-fly. We're hoping that we'll get at least 1,000 from the community that are stored in people's homes, because we're shooting to set up 2,025 flags this year. So that'd be a really good year if we can reach that. It's not up to us, though. It's up to the community. We only have about 1,100 flags that the Rotary Club owns. The other thing, we have a couple other events throughout. Sunday, we are doing the Run for the Fallen once again. We, this is a free event to anybody in the community. Again, you can find the sign-up on the mercedfieldofhonor.org. Sign up, and it's a 3.1-mile walk run, or you can do it two laps around the college, and it's a 10K. So it's a lot of fun. There's a, there is a kind of a, I don't want to say emotional, but it is an emotional ceremony at the beginning where we recognize all of our local fallen heroes that have been killed in combat. The other thing on the Field of Honor, there are four special displays. We have a salute to the first responders section. We have, again, a local fallen, which is different than the Run for the Fallen. There's a different criteria. We also have the historical flags, the 27 flags that have been approved by Congress to be flown, all the way from the 13-star flag to our current 50-star flag. And finally, we have a new and improved 9/11 display. Finally, we have a flag retirement ceremony Thursday night at 6:00 p.m. The scouts come out. They do an amazing job. And if you've never seen a flag retirement ceremony, come on out.
Thank you, Darrell. Fastest three minutes in council work. Jennifer.
Can I get the next three speakers? Aggie Freeman, Joe Hypes, and Jennifer Flackman.
All right, Aggie Freeman.
Good evening, Mayor Serrato, City Council, City Manager staff, and citizens of Merced. My name is Aggie Freeman, and I'm the Assistant Governor for Rotary District 5220 and the immediate past president of Rotary Club of Merced Sunrise, host of the 2025 Merced Field of Honor. On behalf of Rotary District 5220, it is my honor and joy to recognize Chief Stephen Stanfield on the anniversary of his hiring with the City of Merced Police Department. Chief Stanfield is not only a respected public servant, he is also a proud Rotarian, living out our motto, "Service Above Self." Through his leadership, he reminds us that service isn't just a profession, it's a calling to uplift others and strengthen the bonds of our community. Chief, your commitment to restoring morale within the department, fostering professional growth among your officers, and developing future leaders reflects the very essence of that Rotary spirit. Under your leadership, the department has seen renewed teamwork, a shared sense of purpose, and a community-first focus that have resulted in measurable improvements in public safety. To our citizens of Merced, the progress in crime statistics speaks volumes about the culture of accountability, compassion, and excellence the chief has cultivated. And the small but symbolic victory, the recovery of the Applegate Park bear, reminds us that when the community and its police department work together, great things happen. Chief, your steady leadership has restored confidence not only within the department but here across the city. You've encouraged your officers to serve with heart, strengthened partnerships with residents, and helped Merced become a model for collaboration and trust. Because of your efforts, our city is safer, stronger, and more united than ever. As Rotarians, we recognize our leaders who unite people through vision, trust, and service. Chief Stanfield's character, his dedication to his officers and his city, his service here to the people of Merced, reflect the heart of Rotary's mission, to build hope and create peace through service. The chief listens. He leads by example, and he reminds us that when we serve others first, we all rise together. So Chief Stanfield, on behalf of Rotary District 5220 and your Rotary Club of Merced Sunrise, we want to congratulate you on this milestone anniversary. We thank you for your partnership, your leadership, and your steadfast example of what it truly means to unite for good. And now Chief Casey Wilson and Chris Hansen will present you with your certificate.
All right, you guys got five seconds. Thank you, Aggie. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Aggie. Congrats, Chief. Ms. Hypes.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for having me. I'm Joe Hypes. I'm with the Merced County Food Bank. We wanted to come up today to make, basically, share some information with you on behalf of the Merced County Food Bank. As we all are aware with what's happening with EBT, SNAP type of thing, there are a lot of individuals within our community that are hitting hard times that need some help. We at the food bank, working with a lot of our partner agencies, food pantries, are working tirelessly right now, day in, day out, right now, to try to find a way to get more food into our community. So we wanted to come share some information with what the food bank is doing so that you can share, so that you can tell individuals what's happening within, within our city. Currently, we are working with trying to get more food onto our shelves through donations. I am completely in awe and touched by the mobilization of our community that have stepped up, stepped forward to really help this cause out. We have food bins that are all over the city right now, fire stations, police department, even here in this building, in the civic center. There is a food bin that people can come in, and they can donate food. The food will be going to the food bank, which then goes out to the partner agencies. We also want to say thank you for those that have been coming in and then donating to the food bank. We had a, our first sort of like food drop-off last Saturday. We are doing one this year. We wanted to try to just blow it out of the water. So at the food bank this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, we will be doing a food drop point where anybody in this community can come and they can donate food. Please come. Bring your friends, businesses, organizations, anybody. People need food right now, and we can help. You would be surprised, just a can of green beans that's in your pantry, how much good that can do for somebody that needs it. We are also accepting donations. At the food bank, we still have this ability to turn basically $1 into two to three meals. That is the food, a food bank's superpower in any community. So any donation that you would like to make, then we're able to take that donation and then purchase foods through our network of distribution partners, other food banks, and things like that. We have been also touched by the amount of organizations, foundations, businesses that have stepped up and donated. I mean, today, Travis Credit Union made a donation, and then also United Way of Merced County came in huge and made a giant grant for us. It's not only going to help us purchase food, but it allows us to work with our pantry partners to alleviate some of the stress for them when it comes to getting food for them as well. So I invite everybody. We have been mobilized as a city with all these organizations, you know, giving us space for bins. So now we'd like to mobilize the people here in the city to come and donate. So thank you for your time, and also thank you for your support and your continued support as we keep fighting hunger in the community.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening. Jennifer Flackman, Public Information Officer. So I'm here to tag on to what Joe said. We've created a project site on, at city, excuse me, engage.cityofmerced.org, and that has a list of locations, city locations, where the food bins are and the lobby hours, and then a list of preferred items, non-perishable items, that the food bank has listed on their website. So we encourage everyone to hop onto that website, engage.cityofmerced.gov, sorry, and also participate in the food drive this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00. We've also posted some information about helping to shape the future of downtown Merced, and we encourage people to hop onto the survey through the QR code to give their ideas for the downtown station area plan. That survey will be open until November 9, which is a Sunday, so please share your ideas, and it only takes a few minutes to take the survey, so grab the QR code on your way out and take the survey. And we shared that on our social media as well. And the last thing I wanted to say is I'm inviting everyone to the city's first brown bag concert series, which is the third Thursday of November, November 20th, starts at 6:30 p.m. at the newly renovated Bob Heart Square. So get ready for a night of soulful tunes and good vibes with musical artist Brian Cade. You can grab snacks from restaurants in downtown and join us at Bob Heart Square. I would say bring a chair, but you probably want to dance, so we have plenty of seating on the outside and plenty of room for dancing in the middle of the square. So thank you very much.
Jennifer, did you write that joke in, or was that a spontaneous, was that an ad lib? Ad lib?
Yeah, it was very ad lib.
Got it. All right. Jennifer, anyone else?
That's all we have, Mayor. Okay, Agenda Item I, Consent Calendar.
All right, any members of the council have any items on the consent agenda they wish to see pulled through separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull I-11 so I can recuse myself from that vote.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would like to pull seven and eight.
Seven and eight. Okay, seven's the patrol vehicles, eight, I gotta add on my list here. Eight is... The, um... Police positions. Okay, um, anybody else, Jennifer? Anything from the public?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll pull items I-7, I-8, and I-11. Discussion or motion with respect to the balance?
Motion.
Seven?
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Boyle and a second by Councilmember Harris. The motion will include Agenda Item I-5, the adoption of Resolution 2025-67, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Merced, California, assuring timely delivery for the 2025 congestion mitigation and air quality CMAC program application with the Merced Association of Governments, MCAG. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jennifer. On I-7, councilmembers drawing I-7, I-8, do you want to take them together, or do you want to have them taken separately?
Separately, please.
Okay, first I-7.
That would just be a separate consideration here.
All right. Any discussion? Any discussion or a motion? Again, as the agenda states, this is an expenditure of $110,000 to outfit police vehicles, essentially making regular vehicles and turn them into police vehicles by adding equipment. All right, any discussion or a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilmember Dupont. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, and the motion passes with Councilmember Jean voting no.
On to I-8. Councilmember Jean?
For this one, I just wanted to express my support for more non-sworn officers. I think it's important to ensure that we are not using sworn officers to do the work that we could have non-sworn officers do. One line in the staff report reads, "Crime Analyst 2 position will be responsible for maintaining all grants acquired by the agency." I just want to point that out because of something Councilmember Harris mentioned probably two meetings ago. I think it's important that we start having dedicated staff throughout the city in several departments, parks, housing, and so forth, that are dedicated to grants. And so I think this is a good step, and I want us to see, I want to see the city expand on that.
All right, thanks, sir. Chief, what are we doing here? This is, we're deleting Crime Analyst, essentially two Crime Analyst positions and replacing them with Crime Analyst 1, Crime Analyst 2. Could you tell us what that is?
Correct, Mayor. Currently, we only have the one classification, which is just Crime Analyst. So as we, just like Councilmember Jean said, as we envision growth in our department and our non-sworn ranks, we're looking for opportunities for our non-sworn to have some supervisory roles where the one Crime Analyst, I think it's two, it would be a supervisory position. We'd oversee grants, et cetera, et cetera. And it would not require a sworn staff member, a sergeant or a lieutenant, to oversee the division. They can grow and have a Crime Analyst unit that is supervised by their own non-sworn supervisory member. And so thinking of the future of our department, how can we grow advancement positions in our non-sworn ranks? And this is something very common in the city where we have Classification 1 and Classification 2. It's a minimal cost change that does not require any kind of budget adjustment for us. I've talked to Venus, our budget manager, and it looks like confidently we can probably assimilate this into our budget without an adjustment. But moving forward, I think it would position us in a better position for future development to have a Crime Analyst 1, Crime Analyst 2 rank so we can grow this division of our department in the non-sworn ranks.
All right, any questions from the council? Anything from the public on this now, Jennifer?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, so none, discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Dupont and a second by Councilmember Harris. The motion will include the adoption of Resolution 2025-63, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Merced, California, adopting a salary range for the Crime Analyst 1 and Crime Analyst 2 positions within the police department. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, and the motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. To I-11, this is Councilmember Smith's recusal. And this is, for the public, this is a zone change of a 73.7 acre parcel near Gerard and Campus Parkway, essentially zoning what was Business Park to mostly housing. All right, any questions or discussion from the council or is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Boyle and a second by Councilmember Dupont. The motion will include the adoption of Ordnance 2581, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Merced, California, approving Zone Change Number 435 and Establishment Residential Plan Development Number 83, changing the land use designation from part Business Park to residential for 61.7 acres for an approximate 73.7 acre parcel generally located on the southwest corner of East Gerard Avenue and Campus Parkway. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, and the motion passes with Councilmember Smith recusing himself.
All right, we'll invite Councilmember Smith back in, and we'll move on to our action items, which are Item J on the agenda.
Okay, Agenda Item J, Action Items. J1 considers approving a grant agreement for the Arts in California Parks Implementation Grant Program in the amount of $77,000 for the General Vang Pow Memorial Statue and Mural Project and increasing revenue and appropriating the same in the Parks and Community Services Capital Projects Fund 5,000, project number CP240049.
Director Jensen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Community of Merced, Christopher Jensen and Jennifer Flackman. The staff are asking for your consideration of approving a resolution before you this evening for the acceptance and appropriation of $77,000. The grant was applied for earlier this year with the assistance of CPPG in preparation of completing Phase 1 at General Vang Pow Park. This particular area is set aside on the playground in Phase 1 for a memorial terrace on the hillside. I want to acknowledge and thank the Mong elders from Merced Lau Family, who were the original petitioners to City Council years ago to name this park site after General Vang Pow, and want to compliment their continued advocacy for representation at this site and working with our staff to design the memorial you see before you here. So the $77,000 grant is a match. The match is not required. The funding's already allocated to the park, but the $77,000 will help us complete this project as part of Phase 1. We are hoping to kick off construction early, excuse me, late winter and be complete by late summer of this year. So this grant will help us do that. Part of the grant, or excuse me, part of the site plan includes monument panels that overlook the rest of the basin and look out into the sunset at General Vang Pow Park. It also includes an interactive art display, which we will be hiring a local intern to help design to keep the littles at the memorial busy. Any questions from council?
Questions for Director Jensen? Jennifer, anything from the public?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, back to council for additional questions, discussion, and/or a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilmember Dupont. The motion will include the adoption of Resolution 2025-66, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Merced, California, authorizing acceptance of funding from Parks California for the California State Arts in Parks Implementation Grant. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, and the motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, everybody. Very exciting project, especially to get those Bellevue Ranch parks going. That's a big thing.
Agenda Item J2, request to approve a supplemental appropriation from the unencumbered, unreserved fund balance of Fund 3002 Bell Station in the amount of $51,000.
Thank you, Jennifer. A minute.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As an update for the Bell Station, MCOE is currently in negotiations with the GSA, providing an official letter of agreement. We had created a timeline to have the building transferred by the end of the year, but due to timing of the necessary appraisals, estimates, and now the government shutdown, that timeline is delayed. Because of the slight delay and increase in utilities, as shown in the admin report, staff is requesting an additional $51,000 in unappropriate Bell Station funds with $45,000 designated towards utilities and $6,000 in operating materials and services.
All right, question, Smith Williams? Okay, so none, Jennifer? Anything from the public?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
All right, back to council for discussion and/or a motion. So, Amanda, this takes money that was, it's already in the Bell Station account?
Yes, just unappropriated, yes.
Got it. In fund, it's what, $3,002? And allocating that to this purpose?
Exactly.
All right. If it didn't go to this, what could it, what would it go to? Bell Station?
Yeah, it's just funds for Bell Station. It was supposed to go to mold and asbestos a couple of years back, and so that's what the funds have been stayed at. But we do have these expenses for utilities. The budget is low for utilities and would be needed for operating materials just for AC repair, maintenance, lawn services.
Okay, thus paying our bills.
Motion.
Your second?
Second.
Ooh, that's a close one. Shoot, I think Boyle.
That's, works for me.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Boyle. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. And the motion passes with Councilmember Jean voting no.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amanda. J3, Jennifer?
Agenda Item J3, Maintenance District Assessment Ballot Proceeding. Campus North, East College Homes, Ferens Park 1, Hanson Park, Merced Auto Center, Northwood Village, Oak Brook, Oakmont Number 3, Olive Wood, Pleasanton Park, Quail Creek, and Ridgeview Meadows Maintenance Districts.
Thank you. Mr. Olmos?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Juan Olmos, Deputy Director, Public Works. And tonight we have before you, you know, the proceeding for the 12 underfunded maintenance districts. With me also is Stacy Hicks, who is our Special District Landscape Coordinator. And I will turn it over to her, who she is a lot more versed than me on all the nuances with the districts. And also she's our main point of contact for all the contractors and also all the residents who reach out to Public Works.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. So we have a presentation for you tonight regarding the assessment ballot proceedings for these underfunded maintenance districts that Mr. Olmos just talked to you about. This map here is a map of all of our maintenance districts that we do have in the city of Merced. So this just gives you an idea of where all of those are located. And then these are the areas, the 12 maintenance districts that we are speaking about tonight and their locations within the city. So we have 12 maintenance districts that are underfunded and that are in jeopardy of having a reduction in their services, which could be their storm pump maintenance, their landscape services, or for those districts that have both, it could be both. The assessment increases to these maintenance districts are being proposed to cover the necessary expenses in those areas. So as we get to the following slides, you will see that we have presented to you the engineers' reports. And at the bottom, there are some terminology that we wanted to make sure that was clear on what those covered. So there's the admin part that is a portion of a cost for City Council, City Manager, City Clerk, City Attorney, Finance, and Purchasing. And those are based on the number of parcels or acreage in each district. Then under the Public Works, there's a portion of cost for Public Works Administrative Employees. And those are also based on the number of parcels and/or acreage in each district. Then there are direct service charges, which are services that are provided by our parks, sewer, streets, wastewater, and refuse employees to those districts and where applicable. And lastly, our support services, and those are charges for other services that are provided by other city employees or departments to each district. So first, we have Quail Creek Maintenance District. And there's a small map there that can outline about where that district is, but it's over off of Yosemite Avenue. And it's kind of in two parts, as you can see there. The assessment that we are looking at to increase would be an increase of $40, $56.11 per year for each residential unit in this area. Right now, this area, it does receive landscape maintenance services on a biweekly service currently. As you can see from a couple of these pictures, we don't feel that that's, you know, what they should be receiving. So in this, we are increasing that service to weekly service. Next, we have Oakmont Number 3, which is along Parsons Avenue. And again, this is an area that is receiving currently only monthly landscape services. This is a district that we have had to, in the past couple of years, continue to decrease how often they are getting service. And at this point, it's down to monthly. They used to be at a weekly level. And again, we don't feel that they're receiving the level of service that they should be getting. And this would be an increase per unit of $75.23 per year in their assessment to cover these expenses. For Northwood Village, this is right along Yosemite Avenue on G Street. And the, this area is only serviced monthly currently. And also in this district, we have all irrigation off. So there is no water, which is why a lot of times you'll drive by there and see in the summertime that the grass is completely dead. Public Works Department is going by there to handwater the trees to make sure those stay alive. So with this assessment increase, we would look at being able to turn that water back on to the landscape. And currently, as I said, they are getting monthly service. We would be looking at increasing this to weekly. And the increase would be $41.55 per unit per year. East College Homes, this is a storm drain district that has no landscaping. The main thing here, if you can see on the line that says replacement budget expense, or replacement expense, in all districts that have storm drain pumps, we like to budget for $900 a year to make sure that we're covering those expenses. Last fiscal year or this current fiscal year, this district could only afford $378 in their budget. And that's just not enough at this point to be able to cover maintenance on the storm pumps. So we would be looking at an increase of $25.27 per unit in that district. Oak Brook is also another storm pump station maintenance district. And again, their budget this year is only $575 for storm pump maintenance. So we would be looking at increasing that to $900. And the assessment per unit would be increased by $7.25 per year, per unit. Next, we have Pleasanton Park Number 2. And this is along West Child's Avenue between Canal and M Street, South M Street. And currently, they are receiving monthly services for their landscape. And as you can see in this picture, it gets rather overgrown at that location. So we are proposing that they get biweekly service for their landscaping. And the increase to that would be $98.21 per unit per year. Merced Auto Center, which is where all the car dealerships are located. And they also have a storm drain. And we would be looking at increasing that by $12.56 per unit or per acre there, per year. Ridgeview Meadows, currently, they are receiving monthly landscape service. This is located, a part of the district is right across from Golden Valley High School, which is where this picture was taken, as well as a portion that is on East Gerard Avenue. And we would, as I said, want to increase their landscape maintenance to weekly service and provide weed abatement service. That would increase of, be an increase of $45.55 per year for each unit in that district. Ferens Park 1, this area is currently receiving biweekly service. Prior, they were receiving weekly service. This is an area that we have had to reduce service in the landscaping area because of expenses. We would look at putting that back to weekly service with this increase in the assessment. As well with this one, there was a city contribution to this district that we realized should no longer be happening. And with that, that is why this increase is so large, at $383.24 per unit. So a little more background information for that, because that is such a large jump. So Ferens Park originally was two subdivisions that have formed this district, which was Ferens Park Village Number 1 and Buena Vista Village Unit Number 1. And that was by adoption of Resolution 90-91. The open spaces and parks are serviced and funded within Ferens 1 by General Parks. So that money is coming from our General Parks Fund at this time, instead of the district paying for those services. And the city's contribution, as I stated, of 90% of landscape cost should no longer continue, and that is in accordance with Resolution 90-99 that was passed by City Council. Olive Wood District, we are looking at having weed abatement, which is needed in this district as well for their storm pump drain. In this current fiscal year, their budget was only $450 for storm pump maintenance. So increasing their assessment would be $151.39. cents per year, per unit. This is also a district that was not able to cover their own direct service charges this current fiscal year. Campus North, this area is located behind El Portel Plaza and along Campus Drive. Currently, this area is only being serviced two times a year for landscape. And as you can see in these photos, it gets very overgrown at this point. So we are proposing that they would get biweekly service with this assessment increase, and that would definitely help the aesthetics of that area. So that increase would be ninety-five dollars and seventy-three cents per year, per unit for that district. Hanson Park, this is a storm pump station. Currently, again, their budget is only allowing for one hundred dollars for storm pump maintenance. So we would look at increasing that. They were also unable to cover their direct service charges in this current fiscal year for the maintenance of that storm and sewer. So we would be looking at an increase of fifty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents per year, per assess, per unit for this district. So what we are hoping and looking at tonight is the council to approve a supplemental budget appropriation from the unreserved fund balance of general funds in the amount not to exceed sixteen thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars. That would cover the assessment balloting proceeding, noticing costs for one thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine parcels in total in all twelve of those maintenance districts. Also, for the council to set a public hearing for January twentieth of twenty twenty-six to obtain property owner approval prior to the increase in annual assessment levies. Forty-five days prior to the scheduled public hearing, ballot cover letters, notices, and forms will be mailed to each property owner on record, informing them of the proposed increase in levy and other prudent balloting information. And those were attachments in this agenda item for you as well. Public Works staff will hold informational meetings to answer questions from the public regarding those proposed assessments prior to that January twentieth, twenty-six public hearing meeting. Council would hold a public hearing to determine the voter approval of increased assessments, and the public hearing is continued to a subsequent meeting to allow time to open and tally those sealed ballots that would be received. Then, following the continued public hearing, council adopts a resolution approving, confirming, and adopting the engineers' reports based on the results of those ballots. So are there any questions?
Any questions? I just want to thank you for a very good presentation. Juan was right when he said that you were the expert on this for sure.
Thank you.
First, any questions? Mayor Pro Tim Boyle.
Thank you, Mayor. The question I have is, in the presentation and in our legislative text, you mentioned that there's informal meetings that will take place. However, in the balloting documents, nothing's mentioned to that. So if that's getting mailed out to them, should that be included somewhere saying, hey, we will have some meetings, please be in the know about it? I guess, what's your guys' process of getting this informal meeting set up and for them to know, and how they can find more information?
Yes, it was, this is our sample of letters. We can adjust it, and obviously, we were waiting to have this meeting and to get direction from council, and whether we do all twelve districts or partial or, or none, and, and then we can adjust it accordingly. And once with that, you know, we can set, you know, the town hall meetings that we will be holding for them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hicks, Mr. Olmos, thank you for an excellent presentation. I'm, I've consistently been in favor of going to our residents to ask them if they'd like us to have more resources to better take care of their neighborhood. So I'm in full support. I think you make a very compelling case, justifying the amounts you've, you've recommended. I did have a question about the timeline. I don't know if there are any statutory guidelines, but I would be a little bit concerned about going to a ballot in January of twenty twenty-six, asking people to spend more money on taxes. Just the simple fact that I'm not sure how engaged folks are going to be over the holidays. And raise your hand if you feel like you have a lot of money in your pocket after paying that first Christmas bill in January. So I'm maybe explain a little bit how this timeline was chosen and why we're, we're rolling up on January twentieth of next year for this ballot.
Absolutely. So this timeline falls in line also with our budgeting process, which we do begin in December. And in order to have all of the engineer reports for all of our maintenance districts prepared and ready to come to council by our March deadline, this would be something that we would want to have, have the results from those ballots to be able to then adjust the maintenance districts' engineers' reports and their budgets in time for those to come forward for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So we need to move ahead with this timeline in order to take advantage of our current budget year. Do you feel like you have enough resources to message to residents about what's happening, what the issues are, how they make their decision?
I believe so. This, if council takes action on this tonight, we have longer than the forty-five days to hold those meetings with residents before the January twentieth, twenty twenty-six meeting, where the public hearing would be held. So we would want to make sure that we give plenty of time, not running into the holidays, to provide those town hall meetings for residents to come and get their questions answered.
Okay. Well, don't feel shy about asking us for help.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Councilmember Jean.
Can you go up to, I think, the first, second slide of all the maintenance districts? That one. So there's quite a few remaining districts that we have, and then the one right below it, in terms of slide, are those the only twelve that we determined that were underfunded?
Yes. These are the ones that are at a point where they are no longer able to support the services that are needed in their districts.
Are they at all tied to any number of calls or complaints from residents with regards to the service level?
At this time, that's not data that I have with me tonight, that I could provide you, you know, directly. I will say, especially in the Pleasanton Park area, when I'm in that area, because of the school being right there, Alicia Reyes School, so many families are walking, and I do get stopped by residents who are walking their children to school, asking about the landscape in that area. We have received many calls from residents in the Campus North area as well, wondering when that landscaping is going to be taken care of. And so we let them know that it's, we are only able to fund that for two times a year. So yes, we have received, from some districts, I will say, not all of them, no, but we have received calls from residents.
Okay. Yeah, throughout the presentation, I heard several lines of like, these are not the level of services that we feel are adequate. And so I was just wondering, is that the same mentality that we have with regards to some of the other districts that aren't chosen as part of these twelve? Are their level of services at or beyond what we would like? And are there any calls from residents with regards to those level of services as well? Because, I mean, we only have twelve up here, so I wasn't sure if that was tied, again, to complaints from residents or not, or how we made that evaluation of these other twelve that we need to, I think you mentioned one before where they had biweekly services, and then that got reduced down to monthly services. Are there any other maintenance district in which level of services were reduced as well? Or were they all, that there was no reduction in services with regards to any of the other maintenance districts?
At this time, these are the districts that did have to, we reduced services because of their budgets, and they were not able to sustain the level that they used to before. So that, and so their budgets were the primary reason for us bringing these twelve to council.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jean, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for a very good presentation. I noticed that there were a lot of storm drain maintenance issues in these areas. Is that something that's a common theme through the unfunded ones? And is it carryover to the funded ones, or the, the more prevalent in the unfunded areas?
Well, these, they are a combination of some, of these, these twelve districts have both landscaping and storm pump. So, like Ridgeview Meadows is one that has two storm pumps. And so most of our maintenance districts will have the storm pump in them as well, that need to have that maintenance, you know, taken care of on an annual basis. But then there are some here, a handful that are only landscape, that have no storm pump in that, in that area. So we do have quite a few that have the storm pump, that maintenance. But again, these twelve are the ones that are just not able to have the funds to be able to do those maintenance costs that we need to do on an annual basis.
But there are a lot of storm drain pumps in the funded areas, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Dupont.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Juan, you had mentioned, are you looking for council direction on how many informational sessions that you're planning on doing? Or are you planning on doing one for each of the maintenance districts?
Not necessarily. We were not planning to do one on each district. We were planning to do, depending on the number, let's just say, we were to do all twelve of them, we were discussing doing three, three informational meetings.
Okay. And then, how will that information be disseminated to the public? Mayor Pro Tim Boyle had said the letter, but will be pushed out through social media or other ways to find out when those informational meetings will be?
Yes. I mean, the letter will be one of them, but we want to use social media and any, any resources, we want to contact our PIO and use any, all the tools that the city has to reach out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, councilmember. Jennifer, anything for the public?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, back to council for additional discussion and/or a motion. For my part, I think this, this is very important. We, you know, you probably hear, one of the top issues we hear from our constituents is how the city looks, you know, especially people, everybody desires a clean, beautiful city. And, but it takes, yeah, it takes, certainly takes resources, and you see here how many of these are very, very under-resourced. Just from going through this seven or eight years ago, too, this is, this is an uphill battle, and I think you guys know what you're in for. And I think it's, it's very important. I think a lot of people are desirous of these services, but at the same time, you know, potentially reluctant to vote for it. So I think, you know, some of the points that councilmembers made about the process and getting notice out and being able to discuss and, and, you know, them seeing you guys and being able to hear from you face to face is important, just because, you know, this can be a somewhat difficult process. If somebody just gets something in the mail, they're, on something like this, they're most likely, you know, to vote against it. But I think, you know, when they see what this is about and they see how little we're working with here, I think, you know, it's something where we certainly need to, to do our best. So, well, thank you for all your work here. All right, additional thoughts? I'm in favor of all of them. I don't know, I know that was said earlier as well, but just throwing that out there in case anybody has a different thought. Mayor Pro Tim Boyle.
I have one more question. I'm sorry if this is a silly question. Does this include commercial and residential, like all different zoning, or just residential that vote and receive the ballots?
So all the property owners in each of these maintenance districts would receive the information. So as Merced Auto Center is commercial, they would receive their information for their maintenance district to the property owners.
Perfect. I didn't want to assume, so thank you for the clarification.
All people living in, behind the car, living in the car dealership. All right, anybody else? Further discussion or a motion? And this is a five-vote item?
A motion.
Because the expenditure, our city attorney reminds us that this is a five-vote item. Motion, Councilmember Harris?
Second.
Second, Mayor Pro Tim Boyle.
A motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Boyle. The motion will include the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Merced, California, authorizing an assessment ballot proceeding for the Campus North, East College Homes, Ferens Park One, Hanson Park, Merced Auto Center, Northwood Village, Oak Brook, Oakmont Number Three, Olive Wood, Pleasanton Park, Quail Creek, and Ridgeview Meadows Maintenance Districts. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Godspeed.
Agenda item J four, discussion on the speed zone study and request to set a public hearing regarding the speed zone ordinance.
Our city engineer, welcome, Darrell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Darrell Jordan, your city engineer, tonight. We're here tonight to announce the request to set a public hearing on November seventeenth, our next meeting, to consider amendments to the Merced Municipal Code Section, to discuss a speed study that we just completed. And tonight, we're just setting the public hearing. We're not discussing the particulars of it, but we will, at the next meeting, have a full presentation with our consultant. We'll go over the metrics of how we got here, the process of, of the study, how that works. So it's a defensible item in court when somebody tries to question the police department for tickets and what have you. So tonight, we're just requesting that you go ahead and allow us to set the public hearing, and we'll be back next meeting with the presentation. And then after that, we'll receive input that you have, and the following meeting we'll come back and look at adopting that. So we'll have plenty of time to get input from both our, our community here and the council. So looking for your direction tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jordan. Turning to our city attorney, are we agendaized tonight to ask questions on the particulars of the speed study, or just, we're just setting the public hearing?
We can have discussions.
Okay. Okay, so we can have discussions. We're free to ask questions on anything we like. Okay, any, first, any questions for our city engineer? Keep staring at it, thinking, there's got to be, all right, here we go. Councilmember Smith.
I'll hit the arrow of the balloon. I actually found Mr. Jordan's staff report to be fascinating, but I'll hold my comments till our next meeting. I'm not being kidding. That was a lot of good information in here.
Fascinating is, uh, speed zone studies don't always go hand in hand. All right, anybody else? Questions? Jennifer, anything from the public on this item?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
All right, back to council, Councilmember Jean.
Just a point here, if we could attach that speed study to the agenda, it wasn't on this agenda tonight, and so.
Correct. We'll have that with the presentation at your next meeting, and we'll go through the entire process with you and then open it up for questions.
Yep, thank you. All right, anyone else? Move to the proof. Okay, with a motion, is there a second? Harris on the second. Any, any further discussion questions? In case, none, call for the question. Jennifer?
We have a motion by Councilmember Smith and a second by Councilmember Harris. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Mayor Tim, Mayor Pro Tim Boyle? And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Darrell.
Agenda item J five, approval of the appropriation of funds for the public facilities impact fee credit slash reimbursement agreement approved for the Yosemite Crossing Shopping Center in the amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, do we have a staff presentation, or is this self-explanatory, or is it?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I know it's prepared by engineering Joe Cardozo, who I don't see in the audience, so I think between Mr. Jordan, myself, or Mr. Quintero, we can probably answer your questions. But basically, you have an impact fee program that provides for reimbursement for eligible activities. And so the developer in this case, the Yosemite Crossing Shopping Center, has provided for certain improvements. We're seeking your guidance tonight, basically your approval, so that we can enter into the agreement and provide them for the fee credit as outlined in the staff report, two hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars.
All right, thank you, Mr. McBride. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I don't know who the question is for, so I'll just throw it out there, see how, see how it goes. The basic premise is the developer is entitled to six figures of either a credit or reimbursement. Do we have any discretion as to whether we offer reimbursement or a credit? We being the city.
That's a really good question. I think that's really their request of us. I think they've already made that request, and we processed it along their request.
So we have an agreement with them. If they, they choose, if developer wants reimbursement as opposed to a credit, we have to consider it. We don't get, we don't get to mix and match?
I think we're I think we're pretty far along in that process.
So really, the question before us is whether we approve of providing reimbursement to developer of up to $241,696. It's not really a credit.
Yeah, I would just say this too, right? There's often off-site improvements where there, it's going to far exceed the credit, right? So a lot of times the credit, even if you gave them the credit, there's still going to be a lot more that needs to be provided back. And then maybe the case in this instance, I'm just not familiar with it 100%.
That's fair. Okay, I may have other questions, but I'll pause there. Thank you, guys.
All right, additional questions? Jennifer, anything from the public?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
Back to council. Questions, discussions, motion? Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just give us a quick overview on what they did to deserve almost a quarter of a million dollars?
Frank, do you have any? I'm going to defer to Frank on that if he's got more background on this one.
As part of their Phase 3 development, they're installing a median. And they are also doing improvements along G Street. Unfortunately, I don't have the specifications of how much and the length, et cetera, that they're installing. But there's a portion that they aren't reimbursed for that directly serves their particular project. And then there are enhancements to our system, and that's what they're being reimbursed for. It'll include a traffic signal. They are not being reimbursed for the traffic signal because it's predominantly serving their center. So again, it's the improvements on G Street itself and then the median that was being installed.
Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, but the point is the point that developer is supposed to pay public impact fees for the impacts to public infrastructure and other things that a development causes. And the point of those public impact fees would be for us to then contract to develop our infrastructure. However, as another option, instead of paying those fees, the developer can build, yeah, do the work themselves very frequently at a more competitive rate as well and, and provide those infrastructure improvements instead of paying the fee that would go to infrastructure improvement.
That is correct. And the work that they do has to be done and all the records have to be kept to demonstrate that they paid prevailing wage on, on that particular part of the improvement that they did.
Okay. Mr. McBride.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to answer the question that came up, so as part of the agreement, on page 11 of the agreement, page 11 and 12, under Exhibit B is the description, it's a written description of what the improvements are with the total budget. So it outlines there, item line by line, what they are. And the next page is basically a phasing map, which shows the improvements in G Street. So it gives you an idea visually of what the improvements are that your dollars are going for. So those are attached and incorporated into your agreement. So those are, those are pages 11 and 12 of the agreement that's been reviewed and approved by your staff, the city attorney that are ready for consideration for you tonight.
Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You're mentioning G Street, but on the recitals, it talks about center median turn lane, striping and signage and other items on Yosemite Avenue. Are they both streets or is it one or the other? Is it Yosemite, Yosemite versus G Street?
So Phase 3 fronts predominantly along G Street. And that's what initiated the, these particular improvements. So, and I'm sorry, I don't have your, the item in front of me.
Well, it basically says for the installation of the improvements on Yosemite Avenue, which I, I get, doesn't matter which one, just make sure we have the facts straight.
So, Councilor, I'm looking at the agreement. And so if you look at page one of the agreement, it talks about improvements on G Street, just north of Yosemite Avenue. That would be consistent with, with where they are.
Okay, but when it says reimbursement amount, it talks exactly that $241,696. It says for the installation of the improvements on Yosemite Avenue. So is this a mistake in the document or?
Which section? You're looking at Section B? I'm just making sure.
I'm looking at the impact fee credit reimbursement agreement, which is attachment four.
Yeah.
It's on page three, Section 5.
Correct.
Of the agreement itself?
Of the agreement itself.
Okay.
Mayor and council. I believe Yosemite Avenue is the reference term for this document. We can change it to G Street. The exhibit references, references G Street. I believe the project is referred to as Yosemite Avenue and G. So it's just different, different terms, but we can change it.
But the work is on G Street?
Yes.
The work is, and I'm sorry, attachment three of the report, it shows the approved final map. And it'll illustrate the G Street frontage. And that's where the improvements were, are being installed.
If you go back to the other one for a second, I'll show you. Go all the way down. Keep moving. That's if you turn this around.
Councilor exercising our oversight.
That's what he did. But if council's willing to approve, subject to the stated revisions, the documents still within our control to revise.
Good. Councilor Harris, any other questions?
No, that's fine.
Okay. No good find right there. Councilor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So back to staff. I, I think I need more information. I struggle with this a little bit, just from the perspective of the development here created traffic impacts that the existing street structure wasn't ready to support. And this is my neighborhood, I know. I'll give Mr. Quintero a second.
The huddle.
And I, I get it. I remember before and after this work was done, people were making long looping, probably illegal left turns out of Yosemite Crossing, both on, in the middle of Yosemite, the middle of G, across from Railies. It's a lot safer now. People are doing what they're supposed to be doing now. But that traffic hazard wouldn't exist without the shopping center. So what I guess I would like to know more about is two things. One, what is this legal-ish phrase exceeding what is required for development? But maybe as a threshold question, is this a situation where the city is already contractually obligated to make this reimbursement? And council's in a position where if we deny this request, we're in breach of contract?
It's the latter that you refer to because what you're looking at is an appropriation of funds to enable to reimburse them.
Got it. All right. So maybe we should have led with that. So I'm not in favor of breaching the city's contracts with developers, particularly those who've invested in our city. I do struggle with this. It feels like a little bit of a giveaway, given that this impact was created by the development. But, you know, I think if we are where we are and the staff is asking for latitude and they're not asking for quarter million reimbursement, they're still asking for some flexibility to mix and match. So I think we're having a longer discussion about this than we needed to. And I would reluctantly stand in support with maybe some, an ass to think about this differently next time.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. McBride.
Councilor, if I could, I know in the admin report, it says admin policy 835, but it's actually admin's policy 832. And so it's probably been a while since we've discussed this with the council. But if you look through it, it talks about what the development responsibility is and then what the city's responsibility is. And so the developer has responsibility for, let's say, the first 24 feet of improvements. And then everything outside of that is really this area where it's benefited the city. If they install it, we have to reimburse for it. And so that's kind of the nature of these improvements tonight. These are not their responsibility. They're in that area where it's to the benefit of the city. There are many things that we need for the city's purposes. And so this program kind of defines that we would reimburse that or provide credit for it. So I just wanted to kind of highlight that, but that's kind of the reason why we're here tonight.
I appreciate the clarification. I mean, I think that's the answer for this item. The changing the policy is not in front of us. But I mean, again, frankly, the unprotected middle lane was perfectly fine until we started developing out there. So I think maybe this is something to take a look at from a policy revision perspective. But as to this item, I think the question is whether or not we want to stand in breach of contract or not. And I would say no.
Councilor Dupont.
Thank you, Mayor. I would join in councilmember Smith's hesitation as well. I look at the exhibit that's attached and we have traffic control that's necessary in the sense of because the improvements are happening, but doesn't give us a timeframe of how long the traffic control was provided. And this is at a tune of $18,500. That's not a small reimbursement to the contractor in the grand scheme of the $241,000. So I, I think there's some rethinking and also some creativity that needs to go on in what our credit reimbursement amount is. I see where councilmember Smith is confused as a sense of if it's a reimbursement or a credit because the agreement reads two ways. So I, I join in those concerns, but understand that we do not want to be in breach of the contract. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Jean.
Frank, has the developer previously paid facility's impact fee for this project?
Yes, he's paid all through his first two phases.
And correct me if I'm mistaken here, so normally they pay those fees, as the mayor previously mentioned, they pay it. And then if they perform any of the improvements, then we reimburse them back for those type of improvements that they did.
They don't get reimbursed for all their improvements. They get those portions that are above and beyond what they are called for on the project or their conditions of approval.
How much do they pay in terms of facility's impact fee?
That I don't know. It would be, off the top of my head, I don't have that number. But each one's different, whether it's a sit-down restaurant, a drive-through or a store like Sprouts or the daycare center, Buick. All those would pay a different rate.
Okay, thank you.
Frank, do you have an estimate, rough, not holding you to it, but a rough ballpark as to how many or how much impact fee's been paid on?
I couldn't even come close. They're paid at the, when they pulled their certificate of occupancy at the building stage.
More than a million?
Oh, easily, yes.
More than three million?
Stretching it.
All right, got you. Okay, back to council, further, Jennifer, again, nothing from the public on this?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, additional questions, thoughts, comments, or a motion?
A move to approve.
I have a motion by councilmember Smith and a second by councilmember Harris. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Frank and Darrell.
Agenda item K, Business, K1, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Merced, California, declaring the District 2 City Council seat vacant.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Would it be okay if just a short, brief recess right now, five minutes? Call a recess at 7:29. We'll come back at 7:35. This is item K one, our first business item. Restart in one minute, one minute. Jennifer. You already read it already.
I did. Yeah, you want me to read it again?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Cornwell.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, as was discussed briefly in our last meeting, Councilman Deanda has submitted a resignation letter to the city. It was effective October thirty-first, and according to our charter, it is before council to accept the resignation, declare the seat vacant, which will then trigger an obligation to either appoint to fill the seat within thirty days or hold an election for the District Two seat. And that's the item that's before.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then during our discussion tonight, if we say, for example, we decide to call an election, do we have to set forth the potential date and time now, or would that come later after discussion with registrar voters?
There would be a separate item to call for the election. Tonight, if council would like to discuss declaring the seat vacant and the opportunity from declaring the seat vacant regarding an appointment or the election, I believe that's all fair grounds for this evening.
Okay. And then if we elect to appoint tonight, are we agendized to talk about that process, essentially what date we consider it, whether it be at a regular meeting or a special meeting, and then what the process would look like, an application process, if any?
We can discuss it. If there's any specifics, we would come back with an item, you know, covering the discussion, but it can't be part of talks this evening.
Okay. And if we appoint, we're on a relatively tight timeframe where we have thirty days, which I think would make December third the last day, correct?
Yes, it'd be two additional meetings after tonight that an appointment would have to be resolved.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Any additional, any questions at this time for Craig and Jennifer? Do we have requests to speak from the public on this?
We do, Mayor. We have two.
Okay, first we'll take council questions. Councilor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple more framing questions for City Attorney Cornwell. The election route, I'd like to know a little bit more about what that looks like and the timing. I'll just share with you and with everybody in the room. This is the fourth time I've been involved in a filling of potentially filling a vacant seat as a local elected official. My memory is that special elections don't just happen when we want. The government code prescribes one date every quarter when a special election can happen. Please forgive me. Tell me if I say anything wrong. So we would be looking at, if we decided to go the election route, we'd probably be looking at a date in March of next year. So we have to, we have to have an election within one hundred and fourteen days of calling the seat vacant, right?
Yes.
And we have to hit the next statutory date, whatever that is. I don't have it in front of me. And then because there is no other regular election, right, the primary is not until June, the city would be on the hook for the entire cost of running that election?
Yes, if there's no other city on that date that the county can share costs with.
Okay.
It'd be borne on us.
So at this point, you haven't talked to the registrar's office yet, or you have?
I have not.
Okay. But this is sort of the frame, what we're looking at if the election process is the direction council wants to go.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I would frame it as if there's a decision not to appoint, then the election is mandatory.
Yeah, the election route is the default.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Okay, additional questions? Councilor Smith, have you checked that, those dates already in terms of the March date for the initial election?
You know, I took some time before I came down here to try to find it. I could not quickly. I can tell you, I once sat for a vacancy on the school district board, then twice as an elected trustee, we had to fill vacancies. You may remember after the 2020 election, my colleague at the time, Adam Cox, resigned right after the new trustees were sworn, and we voted at that time to go to the election route. I recall there's a government code, at least borne on the school board, where special election dates are set by statute, and it was once a quarter. It was like March, June, August, and October, if I recall right, or November, sorry, November. I think we need to have those dates at our next discussion, but unless somebody can tell me differently, I think that's the process we're looking at.
No, it sounds all right, too. And I mean, if we have an election at a fairness to the candidates, it would have to be, you have to give everybody time to, especially with the holidays right now, where they got to campaign. And if your election's in March, we all know the election day is actually about a month before that when all the absentees drop, so, you know, it doesn't give people a lot of time to campaign in any event.
Yeah.
So March is probably, yeah, the earliest, even if we just had to pick a date out of thin air. Okay. Additional questions? All right, Jennifer, we'll call on our speakers.
Okay, if I can get the two speakers to the podium to my left, please, Ashley Marie Suarez and Jesse Ornellis.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, good evening, Ashley.
Good evening, council members, mayor, city manager, and city attorney. I just firstly wanted to mention that residents would like to uplift the need to engage the community prior to making any decisions. The public participation will ensure fair and due process, even though it's not officially required in the municipal code. We do encourage a town hall or workshop to inform community members of the vacancy as well as to get feedback on how they would like for you to proceed in the process to fill the vacancy. Please let us know if you'd like an opportunity to schedule a meeting with community members that I directly work with in case you have any questions or you would like to hear from them directly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. Long time no see for some of you.
Different looking at you from this angle.
Yeah, no, I've actually haven't been on this side of the dais about five years, probably. Just so everybody knows, I have not missed a Monday night football game since I left the city council until tonight. But just to echo what the community member was just was talking about, about the need for engaging the community, the young people that I work with are, want to emphasize the need for democracy, you know, and they would like a special election, but they also understand the confines of everything and, you know, but let's just remind everybody, democracy isn't always convenient or easy, but it's needed. Again, you could reach out to me if you want to talk with some young people that are civically engaged in this community. There's a lot going on with a lot of different CBOs, a lot of projects that are that have to do with this area of South Merced. Being someone that has the experience of being on city council, sitting, sitting next to Mr. Deanda, you know, a lot of folks from his district would reach out to me, and so that district could convey messages to him, right? And so I know that the people that live in that district are eager and hungry for leadership, you know, and so to always like to center the need of the people of that community that need leadership, you know, the young people would like to be in knowledge of the process of what's happening. To take it a step further, they would like to be included in the process if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer, anyone else?
That's all we have, Mayor.
Okay, back to council for discussion. Councilor Smith.
So it's a tough decision to state the obvious. On the one hand, if we were to make an appointment, we are filling a seat within thirty days. We have an opportunity as the stewards of our city to take public comment and distill it and get the seat filled so District Two is represented most quickly. It's also the more cost-effective option. I got to tell you, though, it is hair-raising to be on either side of that process. I've been both, somebody who applied for a seat, wasn't chosen. I've also had to sit and basically interview people in public. I mean, it happens in this room. It's an open session discussion, and it can be rankerous depending upon just how it goes. So it's not for the faint of heart for the six of us. I tend to think that having that courage and going that path is the right approach in this instance because of the timing. I can't, I have a hard time justifying spending probably a hundred grand or more to run a city-only election at a time when there's no other election, leaving the seat unfilled potentially into the middle or end of spring. And then whoever wins the seat in this special election, everybody's just going to turn right around and start gearing up for the regular D two election that's happening in November. So, I mean, to me, because D two is naturally up for election in November of next year, that's a lot of, lot of energy, a lot of money spent that frankly, the candidates could be better spent, better spending. And everybody's going to have a conversation about this seat. I think it's going to be in the spotlight. I think whoever is going to run for the November twenty-six election is going to have an opportunity to be a part of this process regardless. So, I mean, to me, cost benefit, I would prefer to go the filling the vacancy route within thirty days.
Councilor Dupont.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, definitely a tough situation to be in, but given the tight timeframe and the the seat being up for election in 2026, for me to have the District Two seat vacant for March, even April, having two campaigns on that seat in a matter of less than nine months, I think it's a disservice to District Two to not have someone in that seat advocating and working with District Two residents on their concerns and issues already, waiting longer and longer. Not only is there a time to get up to speed on what the city council's doing and the issues, once you hit March, you're past the town halls, you're past the policies, you're right into budget. That's, that's a lot to handle and wrangle when, if you can get someone into the seat earlier, they can be a part of that process through the town halls, through goals and priorities, and then have meaningful discussion and policy towards budget. So, you know, I'm leaning towards the appointment side to allow for, for someone to be advocating in that seat and not to leave it vacant longer than it needs to be.
Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with my two colleagues. Something else to look at is not only leaving the seat vacant, not having representation in that district, but leaving the council with an even number of people that could not have a tie-breaking vote, and the possibility of not being able to pass a budget item with a majority, with a five-person majority, just by missing a couple of people. I do believe that the process of the interviews and the public interviews of candidates gives the public opportunity to weigh in, and I think that's, that's a good thing, and it takes away the stigma of doing it behind closed doors. It's a fully open process, and I support that.
Councilor Jean.
I'm on the other side. I think that we need to have an election, right? As Jesse mentioned previously, democracy isn't easy, right? It's not convenient. To hear that the cost of it is something that should deter us from having an election, that's just absurd to me, right? Because, again, if we have to pay for an election where the people can be heard, they can run and actually be represented by somebody that they, they support, I don't see that as an issue. I think it's more important to, to have the voices of the people. Relative to interviewing people up here on the dais, it is still at the council's discretion to make that decision, and so that doesn't really say that that's in the public's opinion at all. We still make the decision. It's not as though the public that shows up gets to choose who is appointed, and so those two things aren't the same. Yeah, so I'm in favor of us having an election here. I think that is, I think that would best represent the interest of D two.
All right, anyone else? Mayor Proton Boyle.
I'm getting my buttons next stop. So in favor of doing the appointment for District Two, I agree with some of my colleagues with their remarks from the time, the money, resources, candidates that would have to campaign, and in seven months, there could be another person in that seat. I don't like that there could be a potential vacancy more than thirty days. I think that's a huge disservice to the district, not having someone sit in that seat and help make decisions and be that voice. So I'm in favor of appointment. Happy to talk about what that looks like, and that's where I stand.
All right, for the reasons stated by my colleagues, I'm also in favor of an appointment. It just, yeah, there's, I think all the reasons were stated, difficulty on the candidate, cost, again, the cost is a minor factor, but I think, you know, the vacancy is a big factor, too. You're going to leave that seat vacant for four more months and then have somebody
It's not as though the public that shows up gets to choose who is appointed, and so those two things aren't the same. Yeah, so I'm in favor of us having an election here. I think that is, I think that would best represent the interest of D two.
All right, anyone else? Mayor Pro Tim Boyle.
I'm getting my buttons next stop. So in favor of doing the appointment for District Two, I agree with some of my colleagues with their remarks from the time, the money, resources, candidates that would have to campaign, and in seven months, there could be another person in that seat. I don't like that there could be a potential vacancy more than 30 days. I think that's a huge disservice to the district, not having someone sit in that seat and to help make decisions and be that voice. So I'm in favor of appointment. Happy to talk about what that looks like, and that's where I stand.
All right, for the reasons stated by my colleagues, I'm also in favor of an appointment. It just, yeah, there's, I think all the reasons were stated, difficulty on the candidate, cost, again, the cost is a minor factor, but I think, you know, the vacancy is a big factor, too. You're going to leave that seat vacant for four more months and then have somebody start at a really critical time right before budget, and then as soon as they get their budget, they're going to have to start campaigning again. So it's really difficult, not just on us as a as a council, but leaves the seat vacant for four months and also is difficult on the candidates as well. And again, leaves the seat unrepresented for for four of the 12 remaining months, which I think is a huge deciding factor. In addition to that, too, yeah, again, just the cost of vacancy, those are the big things. So in terms of process, turning to our city attorney, various options being application process, potential interviews, appoint at a regularly scheduled meeting or call a special meeting. What, could you just give, give us some thoughts as to potential options on to how the the process and the timing could look from here on out? Again, it can be tricky with the Thanksgiving holiday as well, too, that, you know, we have to move fast, we have no choice. But with the holidays, too, that that creates a little extra timing you should, you have to be sensitive of.
Mayor and council, there is no particular option that restricts council. It can be from an item on the agenda and, you know, motion and discussion of various potential candidates. It can be application, and the body can direct the clerk on the type of questions he'd like to see on an application. And then we can, and any other option that the body would like to see is a possibility.
Just to share some things before, when we we were appointing our our boards and commissioners in the manner we're doing, only for some time before that, in particular, planning commissioners, we'd have an application process like we do now, but there's call, there's an application process, and then we'd have interviews as well. I'm not saying we should do this or not do this, but we'd have an interview process. Oftentimes, that was at a special meeting as well, where we're just focused on the appointment and and also had the, we'd have an interview process, and then either there or at a later meeting, we could discuss the appointment. Just throwing out some options. Councilor Smith.
Thank you. Again, I'm not saying this is right, but just to share my experience, so the, when I was on the Merced City School District Board, the process that we settled on was there was a two week application process. Interested candidates would submit responses to questions. We, as the trustees, had a chance to review them, and then we interviewed the candidates in an open session meeting, a special meeting, so we could take the time to really have that conversation. I've been a part of it where we've asked canned questions, like in a, in an interview, real job interview. I've also been a part of it where there's more organic questions and chances for follow up. I like the latter, not just because I'm an attorney, but I felt like we got to know the candidates more because you do have to make a, a quick decision. I kind of favor something like that. You know, we need, we need the team to advertise this widely throughout District Two, and I think we probably could help that. You know, have it, have some time for that advertisement to percolate, receive some written submissions so we can start framing our thoughts and then have a, a robust and public interview. One question I'd have for Mr. Cornwell, and I don't expect to have the answer now, but my memory on the school board was that we did not take public comment. And I don't, I'm not expressing an opinion, but I'd like to know if that's discretionary in this context, if we, if we have an open job interview. Like I said, you can get back to us next time, but.
I, if it's an open item, we'd have comments. I don't, I can, I'll look into it, but I don't see how.
I mean, that's something to consider. If we're going to have public comment, we want to hear from the community, but we also don't need three hours of election hearing just to pick an extreme.
We said, I mean, in the past, I don't know what you guys did on the school board, but in the past, when we did planning commissioners, Mike, I don't know if you were interviewed this way when you were appointed to plan a commission, but we just, we'd have interviews. We're agenda is just for interviews. So Jennifer, if you want to jump in, and I know you like to talk and share.
Yeah. So previously, when we would appoint planning commissioners, we would have like a special meeting. It would be open to the public where council members could ask questions. They'd have the candidates up on the dais, and council members can ask them questions. There are already preset questions, that way it's fair for everybody. And then from there, it would be, I think, at the next meeting, a regular council meeting that they would appoint a planning commissioner.
When I interviewed, it was, it was like that. It was a special meeting. Candidates waited out in the hall and got called in one at a time, but they did appoint at that meeting after they interviewed each candidate.
I think we did them different ways, same way, but a little bit different each time. So I think, I remember one time we had all of them sitting at the dais, and we would just ask them questions one by one. There was other times we did them one by one. We would appoint them at that meeting, or we would appoint them at a different meeting. It just, it changed throughout the years, and then we just don't even do those anymore now.
And there are good reasons, you can have, I mean, say, if it's, if it's a public meeting and you're asking one candidate questions, and the other candidates are there, or people associated with those candidates are there, then it, you know, it creates an unfair advantage for the people who go later because they, you know, they hear the questions, they know the questions. Councilor Dupont.
Thank you, Mayor. You kind of alluded to it, but do we, do we have an application that would be somewhat ready to go out to the public tomorrow?
I could probably get one out tomorrow. It all really depends on what you guys want on the application itself. I mean, I can base it off of the boards and commission application that we have and start tailoring, tailoring it down for what you guys want, and then how you want us to have it posted. I know with like the boards and commission applications, specifically on the boards and commissions page, we can have it on like the city clerk page and just direct people to that specific page for them to apply.
Given the holiday coming up at the end of the month and the need for preparation for a agenda board or city council meeting, and the time to verify addresses, if we do a application process, roughly how much time would the clerk's office need to ensure we're ready and prepared to agenda properly?
I, well, I mean, we could probably do, I think we talked about maybe like the 14th, having a cutoff date for applications that way gives us, depending on how many we have, X amount of time to verify with the registrar voters and then develop a admin report and get everything all together and put it onto that agenda. So it would most likely be for the first meeting in December, obviously, if you wanted to go with the regular meeting. But I think the 14th would be the the latest we could cut off because we also have agenda deadlines as well to make sure we get all our items at a certain time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Boyle.
My question was, what's the absolute last day that we have to appoint within the 30 days?
Today plus 30, December 3.
December 3.
Yeah, if it's four weeks to our next meeting, which is December 1, and then December 3 would be the last day.
Thank you.
Councilor Smith.
On that point, on timing, I think it's too much for a regular meeting. I'm strongly in favor of a special meeting. December 3 is a planning commission, right? So why don't we pick Tuesday, the 2nd of December? Give our team the maximum amount of time given existing schedules.
Yeah, I think it's, given the, one, 30 days is super tight to begin with, both for the public and for us, and two, with the holidays, a lot of people probably traveling, and I think it's, you know, the more time, the better. But if we do, again, not, not committing to this, but if we say we do a special meeting on the 2nd, interviews and a point, probably if we do a call special, it makes sense to do both at once, efficiency sake. And then we could leave the application period open potentially longer, which is, which is good.
I would be in favor of hearing interviews and making a decision that evening to give the process more time to unfold.
Yeah, and the more time we can give the community, the better for, for them, too. If we give everybody a week, that's kind of, it's not fair.
Mayor, if I may, if we do end up doing a special meeting for December 2, we could probably push it back to the deadline for applications to come in on the 21st, and I can try to get it all verified and into the system, that the latest, the 25th since, or the 26th since Thanksgiving is, I think, the 27th this year, is that right?
Okay.
So.
That makes it really tough for you, too.
It's going to be a, yeah, we'd be pushing, because I'd be getting two agendas out at the same time.
Yeah.
So at least with the special meeting, it's just one item, so, but I can get the regular agenda out for the first meeting in December, and once I get that one out, I can also get the other one out as well.
All right, and the third would be out because of the planning commission? That makes sense, okay. All right, so if you do it on the 2nd, what's the absolute last date? The 21st, or could you push it to the 24th or 25th?
I could do, so the deadline to get applications in would have to be the 21st, so then that Monday, Tuesday, I can get those verified and get the admin report done and get it routing for all approvals, and then I can get, I'd have to get that agenda out and no later. Same with the regular agenda out on Wednesday, so both agendas will probably come out Wednesday.
Got it.
Since we'll be, we have the holiday, that's Thursday, Friday off.
Okay. What's the best time? Is it 21st, close business, 5 p.m.?
We could do 5 p.m., yeah. I mean, as we're gathering them, too, I'm not going to wait until we get all of them and then verify them. As we get them, I can start verifying them to kind of speed up that process, too, and that way, if there's any discrepancies, we can make any, we can reach out to that applicant and see if they can make any changes if necessary.
Okay. All right, Mayor Pro Tim Boyle, is that a new one or is that an old? Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. It just makes me nervous to take it all the way out to that date. I'd rather go a couple of days, just a couple of days earlier, even if it's on the weekend at the end of November, just because if we miss that, then we are in the default and we're going to have an election. And it just makes me nervous, that time of the year, to take it all the way out to the end, weather, power, who knows, but I'd rather have just a, a couple of days cushion.
Okay, Councilor Smith.
Well, a consideration that we haven't discussed, again, I'll defer to Mr. Cornwell, but my memory of the charter is that when there's a vacancy on the council, the applicant does not necessarily have to be from the affected district. I don't know if we want to set some guardrails on that. I mean, I can't imagine getting candidates from District Two and appointing outside the district, but do we want to, do we want to say we're not even going to accept applications outside of two unless there's no qualified candidates from within two?
Questions to you, sir.
Mayor and council, I, I don't believe we can select outside of District Two.
So we should come back and talk about amending the charter?
I believe we have a district based electric, election system and appointments near the election system.
Yeah. I think we, out of caution, we probably should look at this and confirm that at our next discussion on this item, but I'm sure there's going to be robust interest.
To, I think, I mean, in a sense, I mean, obviously, this is democracy, right? And elections are what is the foundation of our country, but I think at the same time, you're going to get more interest from people wanting to be appointed than people wanting to run. You know, I just don't, I'm not saying that's, I'm not putting a value judgment on that, but I'm just thinking, you're going to get, you're, more people are going to be willing to, to go through this appointment process than to campaign for a couple of months. So I just think that's a good fact.
I'm just raising it because what if, what if somebody from outside of two applies and says, look at your own charter?
Yeah.
Right?
Cross that bridge, I guess.
Just want to raise the issue.
Yeah. To Councilor Harris's point, is everybody available on December 2? Is anybody not available on December 2? Mike, are you free on December 2? Shane, are you free on December 2? Who are you available December 2? Darren, Sarah, you guys available December 2?
Apparently, I'm available.
All right, I'm free, too.
Mayor, I'm available.
Mayor Pro Tim Boyle, free on December 2?
Yes.
I think it seems to be the best course, it seems to be really the only course at this point is, is a November deadline, November 21, 5 p.m., application process, and then that will have to be prepared. Jennifer's got to do everything she does to get this together, which is a lot, and then come back December 2 for a special meeting, 6 p.m., 5 p.m. Anybody got a preference? Probably 6. Good. 6 is okay with everybody? Okay, so come back 6 p.m. on December 2 for interviews and then for discussion, or for, for an appointment, which we'll either have to do, if we don't do it then, we'll have to do it the next day, but interviews. Yeah, application, questions. So is everybody okay with that process? I know you said you prefer an election, but is everybody, that general framework right there, those dates, that process, is that okay with everybody?
That works for me.
Okay.
That works for me.
All right, we'll need to determine then the content of the application, we'll need to, which needs to go out stat, and then we'll have potentially interview questions and then interview process for two, two. I don't know if we need to determine that now, if we can determine that on November 17, but, okay.
Probably have to determine the questions now.
Yeah.
Can we, yeah, can we maybe talk about what you guys want on the application?
Okay.
Like what criteria is or whatever? We can pull up the boards and commission application now, so you guys can get a look at that and see what that looks like, and we can start tailoring that down.
Okay.
If you want.
Jennifer, just in terms of logistics, one, we'll have, and add, if I'm missing anything or anything wrong, tell me. We need to determine the application, what's going to be on the application?
Correct.
Then we need to determine at some point, interview questions, interview process for December the 2, but Scott kind of whispered, maybe that might be better to determine later on as opposed to tonight. Is there, do you have any preferences as to?
I mean, we can definitely bring that more specific agenda item to the next meeting so we can just solely focus on those questions. That way, it gives you guys time to think of some questions that you guys want to ask the applicant.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, right now, it's kind of, you guys just talked about doing an application, so maybe have, get, work on, you know, the questions that you guys want to ask, and we can bring that to the next meeting.
You guys could have a draft for us that we could work off of.
Yeah, I can even look to see if there's like past questions we did for planning commission and see if there are any good questions in there that might apply and just give some options as well.
Okay. Does anybody think we should have, I don't know if this is a good idea or not, but we should have some sort of council subcommittee or anybody working on that process, or are we good without it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Good.
So Matt, on timing, though, I mean, if we're going to be accepting, if the cutoff for applications is November 21, I don't think we can wait till our next regular meeting to talk about the content of the application, right?
No, we have to do that now, yeah, we got to do that now.
I mean, maybe we can each individually email the mayor questions, and then you work with Scott and Craig to come up with a set of questions.
Yeah, we could. Jennifer, actually, pulling it up right now?
Yeah, so this is the boards and commissions application. This is what people would fill in if they were interested in a board and commission. So obviously, we have your, you know, your general contact information up at the beginning. So obviously, we have your, you know, your general contact information up at the beginning. Obviously, we'll take out which boards would you like to apply for.
I think this, I mean, this cover, I mean, it leaves a lot of open-ended question, it's probably pretty good, you just need to-
Change out board and commissions with council?
Correct, just tweak it a little bit. I mean, questions like, why do you think you're the best person for this position? Why are you interested in running? All those are pretty standard. List your relevant experience, attach your resume. You know, what's your, where do you currently work? What's your, you know, what? I don't know, we should get into, like, platform, or, I don't think we should directly ask for that. what do you guys think? Kind of some minor tweaks to this, or does anybody want to see anything different?
So if you're asking for feedback?
Yeah.
I would favor something like this, just tell us who you are, but give the applicants a chance to tell us what they want to tell us, and not over legislate it. Let them make their case to us how they think they need to best make it.
Sarah, is that an old one, or is that?
It was new, but Shane asked the question, because I was confused regarding the questions that you were talking about for November 17th, so clarified. Thank you, thank you.
Sorry for being confused. Councilor Dupont?
Yeah, I think these questions are open-ended enough, even if someone wanted to talk about a platform, they could, and why you're applying for the, for the city council. So I think this covers, or can cover, most of the information that would be necessary or needed.
Anybody else? Mayor Proton Boyle?
Just based on the comment you said, we want something that refers to the platform. I think any other comments you would like to add gives them the opportunity to do so there. What their vision is for District 2, and what they hope to accomplish in, you know, almost a year of being in the seat, I think that's sufficient enough.
Yeah, I think so. I think us directly asking, what are your, you know, what are your, what's your political platform, what are your political ideas? I don't think that's appropriate, but if people want to include it, you know, with the general questions, then, but us asking is not, is not probably appropriate. Okay. All right, so everybody hearing that this is pretty good, just with some minor tweaks to tailor it to the District 2 open seat, everybody's good with that, okay with that? Okay?
So, or like, for instance, where it says, "Tell us about yourself and why you are applying for City Council District 2 seat," I can word it that way?
Yep.
Perfect.
Please list your current employer, relevant volunteer experience, and, you know, community, yeah, some community engagement experience, or relative volunteer experience.
Okay.
Understanding the role and responsibilities of the city council, city council members, experience, special knowledge, any other comments?
Mayor, if I could, would, would one good question perhaps be, could you list or summarize some of the important issues you see facing District 2, and perhaps the citywide, just to kind of get their feedback on, on district issues, something along those lines?
Yeah.
It's a good app.
Yeah, as long as it's open-ended. Okay. And I think where it says relevant volunteer experience, too, I had maybe broadening that a little bit as well to add, you know, community engagement, work in the community, those sort of things, would be important.
Did you say that one under volunteer experience?
Just strike the adjective.
Okay.
Any relevant experience?
Yeah, could be relevant experience.
Okay.
Mayor Proton Boyle? All right. Okay, I think we're, so you need a motion, or is the direction sufficient? Craig shaking his head, no motion?
The only thing we need a motion on is just the resolution.
The resolution.
Okay.
And we'll come back with the summary of the discussion.
Okay. So, motion on the, the resolution declaring the seat vacant, and then open the application period as soon as possible. There'll be an application following that format with some minor changes to tailor it to the open seat. Open until November 21st. Then we'll come back, special meeting, 6:00 PM on December 2nd for interviews and for appointment, interview questions and/or interview process to be determined most likely at our next meeting on November 17.
And I believe we should be able to put, like, a little button on the front page of the web, of our website, so they can directly just apply, that way it's not having to go through different
Yeah.
pages, they can just click on one. It could just be a form, they can-
So write their page one, click on that, apply.
Page one, apply to City Council District 2, they can click it, and I'll work with IT to see if we can just pull up, like, a PDF, they can fill it out, we can do, like, a fillable PDF or something, something where it's easy enough to not difficult to fill out or anything. And we can accept them either via email or in person if they want. And we'll have some printed in our office as well, if people come in.
All right. Councilor Dupont?
Thank you. How will the public be notified on when the application is available?
I'll work with Jennifer Flackman, and we'll get it out as soon as that application is put together.
Okay, and then you had said it could be submitted via email, what, will that email be on the application for people to submit?
Yeah, I'll add that in there.
Okay.
Yeah, that they can either turn it in in person into our office, or they can send it to the city clerk@cityofmerced.gov email.
And it'll be helpful if the council members know when the application is ready, so we can push that out as well?
As soon as this application is put together, we'll let you guys know. I can also send them to you as well, that way if you have people in mind, or if people are asking you, you can give them out to them as well. And then I'll work with Jennifer to get a social media post going.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And all of us, just to sharing it, reaching out to interested parties, potentially. Councilor Smith?
I move to accept Mr. Deanna's resignation to declare the District 2 council seat vacant, and to move towards an appointment process as summarized by the mayor.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second, and I do have a question.
I see.
That's a new one.
We have a motion and a second pending discussion and questions, Councilor Jeong's
When would the applicants be made pub, or when would we find out who applied?
Probably when the deadline's set on the 21st, or, and then when the agenda would come out, the 25th or 26th.
Yeah, so I would, I would have to verify them after the applications are sent in. I can let you guys know as the process comes in how many applicants we, we received, but I won't have a final number until everybody's been verified, just to confirm that they will be onto that agenda.
So when the agenda's out, which would most likely be the day before Thanksgiving?
Correct.
Anything else? Mayor Proton Boyle?
December 2nd meeting, is it mandatory for the applicants to come?
I wouldn't. I mean, I think we're, has to be determined, we can determine that on November 17th, I think it'd be highly recommended, I don't know if it, I don't know.
I'm just posing the question.
Yeah.
That's actually a good question, because that could be something that we add on to the application, if it is mandatory for them to show up. That way, they know ahead of time.
Yeah, and begs another question, Jim, what if you have somebody who's interested, but who's potentially out of town that day, or, I mean, is it, do we? I think we determine that on 17th, but yeah.
Mayor, I would just say, you probably should make it mandatory, because you need to get the feedback from them directly as a group. If they can't be here in person, we have the means to do teams or to call them, we can do that. But I think we should put that in the application, that there will be an interview on, on that date.
Anything else?
That's it.
Good. Councilor Dupont?
I mean, we can talk about it next time, but we're going to have the applications go out this week, so it may be a discussion that we need to have now, especially if you want to put it on the application.
Makes sense. Okay. Appearance on December 2nd? That's the one, I was, I was the, the big boss, you can make the-
I'll add that on the top of the application.
Okay. Yeah. Interview will be that day, and then if, I think to Scott's point, if there's any, if people need, for whatever reason, need some sort of combination, we could work on some other Zoom or telephone options. Okay. Is that it? I'm seeing my, my little Daisuke here is going all crazy, but is anybody left? Councilor Jeong, that's, that's the old one?
For our next discussion on the 17th, we're coming back discussing, like, the interview questions and so forth?
Okay.
Could we also get information on the timeline if we have an election?
Yes, and I'll add cause and work with the clerk.
Actually, I did email the elections, and Melvin just got back to me, and he said that it's looking more like 50,000 to 60,000, roughly, because they just did a special election for La Spanish that was male only. So he said it's looking like 50,000 to 60,000. I believe that's just a rough estimate, though.
All right, anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, we will call for the question.
We have a motion by Councilmember Smith, and a second by Mayor Proton Boyle. The motion will include the adoption of Resolution 2025-65, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Merced, California, declaring the District 2 City Council seat vacant. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. And the motion passes unanimously. Agenda item K2, discussion to select dates for the 2026 Community Town Halls and Strategic Planning Session to provide input on the development of the fiscal year 2627 budget.
Good evening.
Jennifer, Jennifer.
Yep. Jennifer Flackman, Senior Management Analyst, Public Information Officer. So I'm here to get your direction on the 2026 Community Town Hall meetings and the City Council Goals and Priority Planning Session. So, as you know, we generally rotate our town hall locations by district each year, and this year, or for '26, we're proposing to host meetings in districts 2, 4, and 6. So we'll do the, the districts first. So District 2, we suggest using the newly renovated facility at Stephen Leonard. It's a great opportunity for us to showcase the improvements there. District 4, Councilmember Smith, do you have a preference?
I would suggest Burbank Elementary School.
Okay. I will reach out to Burbank and see if that's available on the date that we select. And District 6, Councilmember Jeong, do you have a preference?
I think one of our discussion prior was that high schools are difficult to-
We could, I can check with LCAP if you'd like me to do that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll check with LCAP, depending on the date, and then we can, we can have a Plan B if LCAP isn't available. And they have different facilities, like last year, we had it at Merced High, and so instead of having it in the gym, we had it at the cafeteria. So, so we're recommending the following dates for Community Town Halls, and you have a calendar up in front of you. So these sessions are open to the community as an opportunity for you to gather input for your goals and priority planning meeting that follows town halls. They give residents the opportunity to share their priorities before your planning session. So we're recommending Tuesday, January 6th, and Thursday, January 8th, and then Wednesday, January 14th. And if you refer to the calendar, you'll see those dates are open. So we're recommending these earlier because the budget timeline, so here's an overview of the budget timeline to give you some context for scheduling. February 9th, department budgets are due to finance. So, holding these goals and priority sessions early, and then scheduling your, holding the town halls early, and then scheduling your goals and priority sessions at the beginning or at the end of January, so we're recommending January 31st, which is a Saturday. So this would give staff time to review goals and priorities and include those in the budget talks.
Okay. 6, 8, and 14? Mayor Proton Boyle?
I'll be gone January 6th, so I cannot be there for that.
I show hands, who's available on the 6th? Hand it. Shane, you available on the 6th?
I mean, if Mayor Proton is not going to be there, then I think it would be beneficial to find a new date.
But because the mayor asked, these all work, they can work for me. I've actually got three trials later, later in January and February, so earlier in January works for me. I'll throw out there, January 8th is my 51st birthday. So maybe we could do the District 4 Town Hall then?
No better way to celebrate. Since we're- Who's available on the 8th? Show of hands, everybody available on the 8th? Okay, everybody's available on the 8th? What about the 14th? Who's available on the 14th? Everybody? Okay, so we got the 8th and the 14th are good for everybody. Is there another date?
22nd?
Okay, what about the 22nd? Everybody good on the, anybody have a problem with the 22nd?
The only thing is, I don't know if, Councilmember Harris has looked into this to going to the 2026 Mayor and Council Members Academy for League of California Cities, which is 21st through the 23rd.
Oh, that's okay, okay. We also have the 13th, Tuesday, the 13th.
Mayor, if I could shamelessly plug two dates, I don't know if this conflict with Councilmember Smith, but we do have our general plan consultants who asked, and I told them, I'll bring it up if those dates are not settled. They asked if the 20th or 29th might be dates, because they would like to do another open house. I don't know if the facility will work, because they thought we'd meet here at City Hall, so I don't think it's probably going to work, but they did open house a few weeks ago, so I'll just throw those out as possible dates, too.
All right, so we got, Scott, those, we have the 13th, the 22nd, what are the few dates mentioned? Okay. 28, 29.
So if we're looking at doing it here, we would need to change the district, because we're doing even districts, and this is District 3, so we'd need to either agree to have it in District 3 again if we're looking at Scott's suggestion.
Okay. 28th being the focus group meeting? 29th, okay. All right, what about 13th? Who's, who, everybody, raise your hand if you're good on the 13th? All right. Show that, 8th, 13th, and 14th? Everybody okay? Okay, any problem? Say none, okay? Go to the 8th, 13th, and 14th for the town halls. Jennifer, which one we go to when will determine?
So we need to, we need to reach out to the facilities to see about their availability, and then we'll we'll figure out what dates connect at what facilities.
Okay, 8th, 13th, 14th, and then Strategic Planning.
January thirty-first, Saturday, and last year we had a discussion about time, the year, the years prior, we'd held it, I think, like eight, we started at eight, or did we start at nine? And so last year we started at, we started at nine, so we need to determine a time as well.
Okay.
I have no issues with the thirty-first, it's just my thirtieth birthday, so.
Fifty, fifty-one and thirty. I don't know how shamed that, I don't know either of you. I don't know who you're that young, I don't know how you're that old. Guys seem more closer, damn it. It's your maturity. Okay.
And Mayor, if I may, we do have a green request to speak for, whenever you're ready.
Oh, shoot. All right. Uh, that's Ashley, I see Ashley moving, so. All right, go ahead, Ashley, whenever you're ready. Town halls, town halls are always six to eight.
Good evening. I just wanted to come up here and let y'all know that, um, last year's, uh, town halls, you know, process as well as the strategic planning session, uh, those dates did seem great, the times did seem great, but folks would like to see more public input opportunities just besides the three town halls and the one strategic planning session. Although y'all do a great job of doing more than other jurisdictions in regards to getting input regarding the budget process. They would like to see it be more, uh, promoted as a budget process, uh, for, to seek public input regarding the budget process, as well as having more opportunities for dates or times that vary, instead of having them all in between the week at certain times, they would just like to see a little bit more of uh, variance or opportunities, especially for folks that might work earlier in the daytimes and get later out at night, or that instead sleep in during the daytime, go to work in the evening, and so if there's a little bit of a room, wiggle room on the dates, or adding other opportunities, even if it's not official, or if y'all are able to go and join into other community spaces, plug yourselves in there and get that kind of feedback, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, as I mentioned to a couple of you all, there is an opportunity for community members to share and vocalize some of the housing concerns that they have and to see some solutions that might be tied to budget requests. And so if any of y'all are interested and available to attend an upcoming meeting, November eighteenth at five thirty PM at the Golden Valley Health Clinic, that would be greatly appreciated. As of right now, no council members have agreed to attend due to scheduling conflicts, so there are potentially no risks for Brown Act violation. So if anyone is interested and available to make it, then please feel free to reach out to me. Folks, like I mentioned, would really like to communicate concerns and, um, talk about community identified programs and policies that do require funding, um, which they might not be able to attend the town halls or the strategic planning sessions to communicate those requests. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. So back, um, is the thirty-first okay, or is there another date that we, Jennifer, is thirty-first the best option from your perspective, or are there other options as well?
The thirty-first is the best option.
Okay. All right, everybody available on the thirty-first?
And we would like to know if you'd like to have it from eight to noon, eight to eleven, nine to noon, what, what's your preference?
Okay. Nine, Sarah's looking very serious saying nine o'clock.
Nine to noon?
Nine to noon?
It usually goes till about one, so nine to one.
Okay. Nine to one, gonna ruin Darren's birthday.
We'll bring him cake, pancakes. City Attorney Cornwall is shaking his head. Nine to noon? Okay, nine to noon.
Okay, nine to noon.
We recommend nine to noon.
Okay, anything else needed this time? Format, I know we've adjusted the format a little bit in recent years.
They need to
Probably it seems, uh, you know, have the open house kind of portion is good, but also maximize time where people get to come and and yell at us is important as well, too, so I think if we, maybe if staff could set up five thirty, five forty-five, and then we'll try to start as close to six as possible.
Yeah, six to eight. So we usually ask staff to come in five thirty, like five fifteen, set up, um, for, um, their displays and to get to know departments, we can do that.
Okay.
I would ask City Manager McBride if he has preference as well.
Mayor, take a question. I, I think the earlier we can set up and the earlier we get some public, uh, comments and feedback, the better. Uh, might even suggest we try to set up about five, and that way you can start public comments right at six.
Okay.
Give you full two hours.
All right, Mayor, Mayor Proton Boyle.
I just had to look it up to make sure. I, so last year, you know, we had staff come out and table, but all of our posts were saying that the town hall was from six to eight, so I think we just need to make sure if we're having staff come out there early, we need to advertise that so that more people are coming out earlier and, um, asking our staff those questions they may have, so just making sure that we're advertising it correctly.
Okay, five to six, uh, arrive at five for, uh, staff present, or for, for, um, department open house and then six to eight, council. All right, Mayor, uh, Councilor Dupont.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to discuss strategic planning session and from what we did last year and what we're, wanna do this coming year, but I know we've discussed in the past, the process of goals and priorities. I don't know if that's coming back to council to discuss at a later date as well. I just don't know where we're at in that process to want to discuss it now or if it's coming back.
You felt so that? I mean, I think it's important to have clear, everybody to be on the same page with strategic planning and to have clear expectations about what we're doing and discussing.
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't answering the question, like an update on last year's goals and priorities, or, or what, what can we help you with?
Question on expectation and process for the, uh, strategic planning session.
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm listening.
So we're gonna have a discussion now?
We, we could schedule later, I know, I know, I mean, what, it's whatever would work for, for you, council member.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if the council has the capacity to talk about it now, or if we want to schedule it at another council meeting on what the process is gonna be for goals and priorities.
Man, you can do it now, or else if you guys want to wait? Preference? You try now. All right, Mayor Proton Boyle.
My suggestion for the strategic planning is I would like to see the department's goals and parties before we decide ours to see what they have in mind. I think sometimes we have a lot of these bold ideas, and then we see theirs, and we only have so much money to go around. So I think just seeing what they have, and we can back that, I think that's a great start.
I think it's important to the budget process. I think it really helps staff, uh, guiding budget, a general goals and priorities overview. Uh, when it comes to us trying to essentially get to for, you know, get to support for certain policy items, I don't think that's a, a, appropriate use of strategic planning, that has to come through the traditional council process. Um, and I think there's, um, if there's good value in just us being able to with staff, with each other, kind of have a more free-flowing discussion where, you know, we're not necessarily, you know, just to have that free-flowing talk, too, I think is important as well, we can kind of bounce ideas off each other, and if they, you know, there's a good time for that, and then, you know, if they're gonna be implemented, then, then there's gonna have to be work done. You know, either with various council members working on it outside and bringing it back to council or something like that, but I think those are the, I think those are the big, uh, ways you can add value. All right, Sarah, is that a new one, or is that the? Okay, Councilor Dupont.
Yeah, I would join in Mayor Proton Boyle and wanting to see the department's goals and priorities. I think last year it was asked for us just to put in Excel, Excel sheet together of, that's within the overarching sections of what we wanted to see, and then we went in and looked at all the department's Excel sheets, right, for the first time, and determining what we liked and what we didn't like. So I think it's a better process if we are able to see what the departments are wanting to put forth or are trying to work on on a continuous basis. Last year, a big point was outcome-based, what was the outcome portion of goals and priorities, so I, I would join in wanting to see at least the department's goals and priorities for the year.
Yeah, that's really, and that's really important, too, going into budget, because you say, for example, streets, right, streets, everybody knows streets is a huge, huge need in this town, and you know, and public works can come and say, look, this, we're looking to add X number of positions, or, you know, police with staffing as well, those sort of issues. Councilor Smith.
Thank you. So in the interest of time, um, just remind everybody that we've had this discussion already. When we came to conclusion, the city manager's gonna circulate staff's objectives in advance. So we'll take that in as we go through the town hall process and then sit down on the thirty-first and do our best to come up with a shorter list of actual goals and priorities instead of a list of staff outcomes. And try to put the city manager in a good position to come up with that document for us.
Councilor Jean.
No, same thing. Uh, I was just gonna bring up, we had this conversation already. And I remember there was a process laid out of when things were gonna get done, and so I think we need a refresher of what happened in that process.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Mr. McBride, do you have the direction you need from your council?
Always, Mayor.
All right, anybody else, anything else for the good of the order? All right, Jennifer, do you have everything you need?
Yes, I do, thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you. All right, that'll conclude that item and take us to item K three, Jennifer.
Agenda item K three, request to add item to future agenda.
Do you want me to write, Mayor Proton Boyle?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Councilor Dupont.
Nothing tonight.
Councilor Jean.
Nothing.
Councilor Harris.
I would like to revisit, um, our resolution on council code of conduct and ethics. Specifically, I would like to look at, uh, adding items to deal with, um, violations of the code of conduct and ethics. There's nothing in our resolution now that addresses that. I've looked at other cities and they have, um, sections for, uh, warnings, admonishments, and censure, and I'd like to look at completing ours.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Come back. Middle of December, okay, or do you want a different date?
Um, I'd like to expedite that if we could.
Okay, November seventeenth or December first, both of those are within thirty days. Dealer's choice.
We can do the seventeenth.
Okay. We have a censure process, too, I'm something different than.
We do have one?
We have censure.
But not the
I don't think it's, I don't know if it's in the code of, the ethics update was, or the ethics ordinances, or the ethics code of conduct was updated, what, twenty eighteen, nineteen, something like that?
It was updated in twenty-four.
We did that, too. Okay, um, yeah, all right. November seventeen? Okay, Councilor Harris says, is that a motion to have that heard November seventeen? Is that, is that a motion?
Yes, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilmember Dupont. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Councilmember Jean, thank you. And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, is that it, Sarah, is there anything else?
Thank you.
All right, Councilor Smith.
I don't have anything. I'll just point out from my colleague, uh, if you, if you're not aware, check out a resolution council code of ethics passed by Councilmember Matt Serrato, I think it was in twenty seventeen. Uh, we discussed it, second part of twenty twenty-four, so as you prepare, probably want to start your research from that. All right, great.
Which means you can probably find some problems if it was, uh, if it was written by me. All right, um, nothing for me. Council comments, standing on my left, Councilor Smith.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilor Harris.
Yes, I was looking at Councilmember Jean's webpage, and I was distressed to find that there's a meme that says the Merced City Council actually supports the Ku Klux Klan. I believe that's reprehensible. And I'm, I'm offended by it. I'd like to know if you think that's a fact. And if not, I would like an apology to the council because that's way out of bounds.
I could address it. I think that was posted, uh, but when we approved of the Christian flag, I forget exactly what date that was, and that posted out. Yeah, in my post, I mentioned that the Christian flag is a symbol that has been used, uh, to hide behind for white supremacy and the KKK. And so in my post, if I'm not mistaken, I mentioned that when we approve of that flag, we are supporting the KKK.
Councilor Dupont.
I don't think we approved any flags this year, but, you know.
No, I think Harris is mentioning it relative to you.
I think it's my time to speak.
Good, Councilor Dupont.
We didn't prove any flags this year, so it doesn't make a difference, but if you're gonna post about me, might as well spell my name correctly. Other than that, you know, there's a lot of good things that are going on within the city. There's a lot of good economic development and new openings at the shops that's going on. More housing going into District One, so it's been a long year, there's been a lot of work. CP forty-two is coming along, looks great. So thank you very much, Director Jensen. So keep up the good work, uh, and I look forward to many more projects and many more accomplishments.
Your protein boy.
Well, I was just gonna say I got to the final four for Drama Island, so I got a lot of further than, uh, Mayor and Councilmember Smith, and, um, just wanted to note kind of what, uh, Councilmember Dupont said. There's been a lot of, uh, grand openings, a lot of reopenings. Um, very excited for Merced right now. We're headed into the holiday season. Um, I'm just looking forward to just more of what Merced can be, and, um, that's it.
A really nice little stretch of grand openings. Uh, the mall looks, starting to look really good. The mall all of a sudden has a lot of people in it. You go out there and it's busy, and it's the first time in a long, long time where, um, there's kind of a vibe there, there's energy, and there's, and there's a lot of activity there, so thank you for everybody who was a part of that. Want to give a special shout-out, we went to, um, uh, last week to the Burger King grand reopening on, uh, Child's. And they did just, they did a fantastic job. They threw like a little community party, they donated a thousand dollars to the Police Athletic League Boxing Gym, um, and really, you know, in a, I think focusing on a, uh, especially on the lower income folks, really did a really nice job for them, a lot of giveaways for kids, bikes, really nice prizes, so that group did a fantastic job, so just wanted it was a no Kings except for Burger King, they said. But they, um,
Did you have it your way?
I did, a chicken sandwich, I don't walk. No, they, they really made a huge effort, did a great job, and then, um, Jennifer and everybody else, uh, who was involved in the, uh, Arts Commission, the California Arts Commission Tour, uh, Councilor Harris was there as well. Councilmember Harris was there as well, that was phenomenal. And our town, in a huge way, showed up and just really showed off downtown and the culture of downtown, everybody who cares and loves about downtown. And then downtown just as a way to celebrate our community and for our community to express itself in a huge way. So it was very, very impressive. And I think just shows to all the good, hard work all of us have been doing to improve our downtown really paying off in the way our community is able to, to celebrate itself there. And that's it. So with that, Councilmember Harris, I believe you had a request for our adjournment.
Thank you, Mayor R. I. D. O. I'd like to adjourn our meeting in memory of Brian Donnelly, retired Division Chief of the Merced Fire Department, a fire academy and EMS instructor at Merced College. His life is devoted to public service and public safety. He was my friend for over 25 years and he'll be sorely missed.
No, a very, very good man. Had the pleasure to, to, to meet him and really a great man. All right, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilmember Dupont. Mayor and Council, please cast your votes. And the motion passes unanimously.